Alright, we'll go ahead and start recording its policy committee. Okay, so. I don't remember. I know the board talked about the animal control ordinances. I think we're supposed to make sure that there is language. Service animals. Service animal.
Congrats.
Welcome. Trying to do work. Okay, so I believe for service animals, the board's direction was just to make sure that there's a comment in here about. So it should be under here. Farmer customers of service animals must provide proof of current vaccinations. All service animals must get the clean owners. Okay, so I think it would come in line. We need to come up with some language that says bottom line, you must be in compliance with either the city or the county ordinance that governs your residence. Basically. So.
And I did link those in up the phone.
Right, thank you. Did we find out if Apple had one?
I linked it in. I think it was very limited.
And that's fine, but we're just letting them know.
So it's there, city of.
They're there. Yeah, you need to check your.
So applicable city and county and/or county codes.
So. Upon request owners of age, proof of current vaccinations to the superintendent with their request to be. Okay, and I think Amy said that that was fine, that we're allowed to ask for that. I'm just wondering if it should be.
You could even maybe take it on to number five and say additionally, all city and county.
Right. I don't think it should be upon request. I think it should just be. Owners of service animals must provide proof of vaccinations to the building principal because they're the ones reviewing this. Only have it listed twice? So it does make sense to choose building principal because that's who they're applying to is the school.
All service animals must meet current city and county.
It seems like we're saying service animals on it. Um, all service animals. Okay, no, I have all. City or county ordinances. Regarding must be. To. Any service animal regulations? I will put request to.
Technically, they don't have anything in their ordinances that says service animals. It's just animals in general.
None of them do?
They're all just, it's all regarding just animal.
Just dogs. Like your dog just has to be licensed and vaccinated.
Okay, so then. All city and county ordinances must be met and adhered to regarding any.
Any animal registration and licensing? Any requirements for animal registration and licensing?
All requirements and. Nation. Vaccination. Of animals. And males. Requirements for licensing and vaccination of animals. Must be met and adhered to pursuant to. Okay. Must be met and adhered to.
So that could be all city and county requirements. So you just cut basically go after the all, correct?
That's a good idea. All city and county ordinances. Regarding licensing and vaccination of animals must be met and adhered to.
When applying.
Do we have any others? Could just leave it at that.
Okay. Less is more, right?
Right.
We just, this has to be met and then you can go ahead and yeah.
Right, because then we're saying they need to provide proof of vaccination to the principal.
Right.
With a request. I wanted to show that we're, it's about the, I mean, I know it's about the service animal, but.
When requesting or when.
Because down here with the request to be accompanied by a service animal.
Right, that's why I was trying to figure out that wording. I was like, maybe we just don't say it at all. Like this is what's gonna happen. When submitting applica-, is it an application? Um, when requesting a service animal? Yes, you could do when requesting a service animal.
Okay, come on in. Alright, so. I'm not sure how to word this. Oh, there we go. Prior to requesting. Uh, prior to the request to be accompanied by a service animal. Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
So that makes more sense. So all city and county ordinances regarding licensing and vaccination of animals must be met and adhered to prior to a request to be accompanied by a service animal. So these are fine, so we can un-highlight them. What is that red noise?
Um, fingerprinting.
Okay. Alright, so the animal presents a direct threat or under a reasonable risk to the health safety. The problem is, we don't really have any definitive direction or definition of direct threat or reasonable risk, unreasonable risk. So we'll have to leave those as is because even the lawyer was like, well, it's just a direct. It's like, that's not a definition, it's a word. So yeah, there's no guidance on that. We'll just have to leave that. It's just super subjective. It's gonna be by situation. Right. Oh, here we said building administrator. Let's see. Okay, that's a word we use.
So number five or whatever we need to change that.
Okay. Alright, so then let's go. Here, what was this one? Any student who seeks to be accompanied by a service animal, including a service dog in training. Okay, so we can.
So we can take the in training out, right?
While school property shall have such request addressed via section 504 and individual education plan or other applicable plan, including a potential healthcare plan with the district, which we do have. Okay, so I don't need or other. What's that?
We do, because we have some kids that it could be that they just have a medical plan.
Oh.
And they don't necessarily have a 504 because they don't need other accommodations. Yeah, the team could decide to put them on 504 and that the only accommodation would be the service animal.
So.
Because we have kids that have diabetes and they don't have 504.
Right.
And we just have a healthcare plan. And I know there's dogs that do service animal for diabetics.
Students' requests for service animal related accommodations will be reviewed based on the specific circumstances particular to the student in question and may be addressed in conjunction with the student's 504 plan. What is that saying? Isn't it saying something? Is it?
Students' requests for service animal related accommodations will be reviewed based on.
What I think it's saying, now that's reviewed annually. So the school system is not responsible for the care or supervision of the animal, including the welfare. Okay. The district is not responsible for walking in. Students with service animals are expected to care for the animal. Um, a designated area for relieving itself is a dealio. Issues related to the care and supervision of service animals will be addressed on a case by case basis at the discretion of the building administrator. Student requests for service animals related. See, what I think this is saying is that if the school decides you don't need the service animal, we can give you additional accommodations in your 504 plan or IEP. I think that's what it's saying. I don't know if we're allowed to do that.
Well, I think it's saying if there's accommodations in their 504 or IEP that are tied directly to the service animal. You know, so it's, I don't even know. They do a different sort of PE activity to, you know, and the service animal's part of that. Or I'm trying to think of how that would look, but that would be written into their IEP and it would be reviewed annually and could be updated or changed because that's how you do 504 and IEP, review the magnitude. And that maybe there's accommodations directly tied to how that service animal is used or not used.
Okay, so students' requests for service animal related accommodations.
So accommodation that's specific to.
So if they want to go to PE or if they don't want to go to PE because they have a service animal because playing dodgeball is gonna scare the animal.
There was some sort of accommodation that would allow for alternate.
I just don't understand what this has to do with the school system not being responsible for the care.
It's in the wrong place, it seems like.
So maybe it could.
Maybe that's its own.
I don't know, because it's like, if it's PE and the kid wants to participate, but they can't because they have to care for their service animal, is this meaning that someone's now going to be responsible for caring for that animal? Why the student participates in PE?
Or I guess potentially that could be if the, if the student has to go take their dog to go to the bathroom and misses class time, one of the accommodations could be additional time will be allowed. That could be an accommodations that's written so that their disability and their service animal's not hindering their progress. Like they'll be allowed extra breaks during a test for their dog to be able to relieve itself. You know, I don't know. Like if that could be an accommodation you would have to write so that they.
I don't know.
I mean, maybe we should add the language of. Not so much accommodations, but for the service animals' care and supervision will be reviewed. That way it ties into this section of whatever reason additional time is going to be given to the student because if they miss class time in order to take care of whatever the animal needs.
Right, okay. I hear what you're saying and I like that.
Because otherwise it doesn't seem to fit in that section.
Yeah, I don't know what we're, I'm gonna see if the attorney addressed it in any way. Nope, she did not. She didn't address it. Okay, so. Student requests for service animal related accommodations will be.
For care and supervision.
Will be.
Well, I just don't even know if it is care. It could be a lot of things. That was just one example that came to mind. I don't know what else it could be. Um, I mean, your accommodations, it sounds so situational depending on.
Right.
Right, but it's still within this section about the care and supervision of the service animal.
What if we kind of combine these two to a comic? So issues related to the care and supervision of service animals will be addressed on a case by case basis at the discretion of the building administrator.
May be addressed in conjunction with students' section 504 or IEP. Would that?
I, that's what I was thinking. So. Moving the A. Because I don't know. We're just gonna take that out. Yeah, that ties it. Would we also want to include medical plan, whatever we.
That's what I was, yeah. However, we were.
Or, or medical, or medical plan instead or. Because how is it stated up there?
Just that, or including the healthcare plan.
Or other applicable plan, including a potential healthcare.
So then for the.
Overtake the other or. Take the or out between plan and individual. You'll need a comma after.
After the plan, yeah.
Okay, so does that make sense? Okay. And then I think that was it.
Yay. Ta-da.
Okay, so this one can go out for.
Survey.
Survey. So self-directed learner, I think we got all the way through.
Got through everything except for the, is it the application? We got through the application, it wasn't the procedures part, right?
Um, I think you are correct. Here's the application. Let's pop it open. Application submitted by. Yep. Yep. Yep, okay, so we got through the application. Now we just need the procedures.
I think I wrote that one, so this is long. It's probably the longest of all of this.
Oh, it's only four pages. Let's see what we got. Alright, eligibility requirements, requirements. To be a designated, to be designated a self-directed. To as a. I don't like those words. Say self-directed learner, a student must meet all of the following criteria. Demonstrate mastery of content knowledge through grades, assessments, or mastery-based learning rubrics.
Did we take the mastery-based learning rubric out of our application? I think we changed that.
Okay, let's see where we are over here. Eligibility, demonstrate mastery according to two of the following.
Yeah, we did portfolio.
Demonstrate one year of academic growth, demonstrate timeliness in returning assignments, demonstrate mastery of addition, multiplication for numbers. Okay. Demonstrate form choice. Alright.
But if you go clear to the top, those four bullet points that are there too.
Right.
One of those used to be that mastery-based learning rubric and we took that out.
Okay.
And we tweaked it with the portfolio or whatever, but.
Oh, it's happier. Alright, um, didn't, okay. Mastery of content knowledge through grades, assessments.
Or portfolio. Masterful, yeah.
Portfolio.
Because that's grades.
Report card.
It's grades.
This is assessment or portfolio.
On state.
Okay.
Proficiency to the standard.
Yeah, I would just copy that whole thing in there. Rather than just leave it vague as a portfolio because that.
Right. No, we were pretty intentional with that, yeah.
It's way too open. Or.
So this might be a stupid question.
No questions are stupid.
Is there a difference between criteria and requirements? Because technically this is saying all the same things in the application because it says eligibility criteria and then it's pretty much the same as the requirements on the procedure.
Oh, I've seen eligibility criteria, eligibility requirements. So why wouldn't it say the same thing? Then I think we should make this criteria. Because it's, uh, okay. We're saying we must meet. Must meet, okay, yeah, we'll just be the same. Let's be uniform here. Alright, demonstrate mastery of addition and multiplication for numbers zero through ten, as well as related subtraction and division problems. Students in grade kindergarten through fourth grade shall be exempt from this requirement.
Can kids K through four anyway?
We don't say that here.
Well, no, this application doesn't specify grade level.
Well, it says it's starting at fifth grade, right.
Hence, they'll, others will be exempt because until fifth grade, they don't have to do that.
But kindergarten through fourth grade, we're not identifying self-directed.
That's what I was just gonna say. Is that even relevant?
Right.
Are they exempt from this requirement or they can't apply? Like you have to be fifth grade before you can be. Not eligible as A. And not eligible to be A. Self-directed learner, maybe?
Self-directed learning.
Oh, that's good. For self-directed learning.
So, and then on the application, it does say for elementary students.
Technically, fifth grade is still elementary.
But should we define that and to keep it consistent so that somebody's like, oh, my third grader wants to be follow law. Because it just says for elementary students, but then.
For K five, just put K five.
In here, we're saying. Kindergarten through fourth.
So through fourth or through fifth?
Actually, we should just say. I'm gonna strike that. I will erase it just yet. Um, we should parallel this. Okay. Because that's what's in the statute.
So a comma would go there, right?
Sure.
I just know it's on the other one.
I didn't. You didn't, oh, pick up that. So we're going to delete that. Demonstrate academic growth. So here.
We had talked about one year's growth.
Okay.
Maybe, is it one above that? Yep, number two. So do we want to copy that whole first sentence?
The whole thing, yeah.
And just replace it?
I don't know because we're not, we're not going into the same depth.
No, just in the first sentence where it says, because it's, you notice it says state assessment or equivalent. So when you look at what we were doing, it did include that state assessment or equivalent.
Okay, I gotcha.
Yeah, that one, yeah. That, just that sentence, sorry, the building principal part, we don't care who's responsible for it. This is just the criteria. But then it matches.
Okay, timeliness in returning assignments, self-motivation, ability to establish goals.
And that was described in there, I think, too. Right there. So it's the same. It's already the same.
Okay, do we need a and or or there? Demonstrate timelines, timeliness, motivation, and or.
Put it in the same order.
Alright, so. Demonstrate mastery, demonstrate one year academic growth. Demonstrate mastery, demonstrate one year.
Timeliness.
Demonstrate timeliness. And demonstrate mastery. And then we have demonstrate in form choice. Why is this?
So that's where that comes into play because that only applies to kids in eighth grade or higher because those younger kids don't have that opportunity because they don't build a portfolio.
They don't build a portfolio. Okay, but what language did we? Okay, but what language did we demonstrate and informed choice? So we didn't specify, oh, yeah, we didn't.
Down below.
Okay. So because I know we, I'm gonna do this real quick to make sure.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know we, we worked the wording based on statute.
Yep, and based on what the class or, we have access to.
Okay. Okay, here, they're defining it. And keeping it up to date.
So up above, were you just copying and pasting?
Right.
You see, I changed it to a one instead of number six?
No, yeah, I know, I was just wondering if.
How that fit there?
Mm-hmm. Because what they've done is they've just sort of, um.
Mm-hmm.
Process for students to document. But this, okay, um. So demonstrate informed choice, so we're gonna take this one out.
So if we go back to our application that we wrote?
Yeah.
Did we, I think we did, cause it was in there twice.
What?
I think that same wording, we did the same thing last time, like, remember, it felt like it was redundant? So I think we took it out, just like you were about to do on this other one, it's like, why are we saying the same thing twice?
I'm not following you.
So number two?
Oh, down here?
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't gotten down to that.
Sorry.
That's okay. What I'm trying to figure out is, this is the procedure. And we're saying must meet these following criteria. But like, over here, we don't list these, and we don't state this. We're not telling them how, cause this is on the application, should we add this into?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Okay, so. Words like this just a little bit, because it's almost as if we're.
Just making the same argument twice.
Saying the same thing, yeah, over and over, so, um. Grade five, um. Meeting. So it should be scoring.
By scoring?
In the or at the?
Is it for me, thank you.
Is it in there or at the seventy-fifth percentile?
Thank you so much.
I would say at the seventy-fifth percentile or higher. Scoring. Okay, so that to me is more, um. More better. So, it's to some degree parallelo, I mean, it's paralleling, but not verbatim. Age-appropriate learning outcomes, there wasn't anything extra special there, was there? No, that was. Wait, where is that?
It's not.
Okay. But. And what does that mean? Did we take that out of here? Okay, so demonstrate mastery. Demonstrate academic growth, demonstrate timeliness. Demonstrate mastery here.
So that's specific to math, which is fine. But then I looked at other one, what, it's not very descriptive. But at the same time, do we, obviously, they need to have met benchmarks of reading and writing. It can't just be math, like, but, right.
But there are many, oh, there's nothing regarding reading in there?
Mm-mm.
It's just specifically math.
Well, I guess here's my thing, we're saying statute has verbiage specific to that and math.
Right.
Like, in that piece is, which was interesting.
But I would think we'd need something for reading.
Which I think, if you're gonna demonstrate, that number one covers that.
Well, that's what I was thinking. Demonstrate mastery of content knowledge through grades assessment or through portfolio demonstrating proficiency on the state standards. So over here. So they have to demonstrate mastery according to two of the following. We're not stating that over there. Demonstrate one year of academic growth as measured by the most recent state or district-approved diagnostic assessment. Demonstrate timeliness, I mean, I don't understand. We're not calling it out on the application that you have to be at your grade level or above.
Right.
Um, but to me, I, that's a given, I think. Why is that there?
That's me.
Oh, is it you? It's, oh, yeah, you're the, duh, okay. Alright, sorry. Um. Cause nowhere do we state. Okay, well, requirements for flexibility, they have to continue to master content and skills appropriate for their grade level. And make one year of academic growth. And that's to fulfill and maintain their status. So over here, in the procedure. Must maintain criteria annually.
So it does state, and this is what's coming from the statute, says. Whose teacher or teachers designate the student as such. The teacher may consider the student's mastery of the content, which is our first one, academic growth, timeliness for silence, self-motivation, ability to establish goals, and. Reaching age-appropriate learning outcomes. So that's, oh, they just took those pieces and broke them down into those steps, is my guess.
Age-appropriate learning outcomes. Okay, so you think we should leave it in there? Cause to some degree, in the application, it is over here under the flexibility. Which is, um, continue to master content knowledge and skills appropriate for the grade level and make one year of academic growth. So we're raising the bar, so I think, um. We could leave it there, I mean, it doesn't, we're not gonna find that over on the application, that, that verbiage.
I just, I was gonna, that's why it's there, I'm sure, is cause they pulled it from statute, whether or not we think it's appropriate, that's up to us, but that's where it came from.
Well, we're demonstrating everything until we get number five, and then we reach.
You can change reach to demonstrate.
Just demonstrate age-appropriate.
So it is interesting, as I, you read through this and how it's listed. When we say, I mean. They're not eligible to fifth grade, I would say that's not how this is written. It's just saying a full-time student who. And then when they finally get to the math facts, it's specific to as a fifth grader. And then as an eighth grader. So, like, you have to do all of these things, and then when you get to fifth grade, you have to do number four. And then when you get to eighth grade, you have to do number six. But if you're not a fifth grader or higher, you only have to do, so I don't know if you move number five up to number four spot? Cause those four meet for everybody, and then a fifth grader has to do number five.
So is that what it says in the statute, is that where it's at? Okay.
Yeah.
It's odd that it's addition and multiplication.
Yeah, so, A, on the statute, A is demonstrates mastery of content through grades assessments, mastery-based learning. B, and that's where that teacher and it's timeliness and all those other pieces. C, who's starting in fifth grade, so then it gets specific to what fifth graders should be able to do, and it's the addition, multiplication. Uh, and then the next one is who's starting in eighth grade. So it does, like, every student up through fourth grade has to do one, two, three, and four. Fifth graders have to do five. Sixth graders and seventh graders have to do through five, eighth graders and above now have to do all of it. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, one and two, we can remove. Okay, so, because this was their language, and we've got it down here, demonstrate. Is there a comma or period there after grade eight? Is there my apples?
It's a comma.
Just during grade eight, by. Okay, so. Working towards their post-secondary goals and supplementing their student learning plan if applicable, with such activities as participa, participation and extended learning opportunities. Okay, so this is procedure.
Mm-hmm.
And then the board directs superintendent to develop a process for students to document their post-secondary goals for the purpose of this policy. Okay, so. Is that part of their full student learning plan? What two, wait. Would one and two actually be combined as opposed to separated? Wouldn't the plan include that? Well, see, I guess this is where I'm. This is a procedure, the other was the application. So the application is more directing at the student, the procedure, I would think, is directing student, staff, and administration. So I think so much it would be.
Is referencing it because this is any flexible learning permitted, under this section must be agreed upon by the student, his or her teacher or teachers. And the student's parents or the guardian, so it's a and, like, basically, it's a team decision.
Right.
You can't, just they can't say, they meet these criteria, therefore, you have to designate them as self-directed learners, it has to be agreed upon by everybody, but.
Okay, so we are actually saying everything here. What we don't have is, it's just written more in story format. Supplementing their plan if applicable, when would it not be applicable?
I mean, I can't, cause all of our kids do, some of our counselors do with all of our kids, so in my case, or our case, I can't.
So I'm gonna just take this out, because we've more, the only thing we're not doing. We could have this and put that in. Plan, third section, third. This one didn't, bullet point one and two didn't say anything about personal goals. That's interesting.
Which is part of this wording in the statute, does it have a personal goal?
It does. Educational goals, but not personal goals.
Personal goals are in the statute, though, which is interesting, yeah.
So the board directs the superintendent. To develop a process for a student to document their post-secondary goals for the purpose of this policy. Okay.
I know that word in red, we added last week, cause we wanted to make.
Right, but we were able over here to add the. Make progress towards, uh, no, continue mastery content. Cause this is to fulfill and maintain their status as a self-directed learner. So this is in part of the application, we're telling them, oh, by the way, you gotta keep up on everything, you can't slide. Oops, there we go, there we are. So, over here, this was us, so we could actually take this out. Cause I think it's up here.
Or even just listed as number seven, that says, um, demonstration for.
Or could be listed at the, at the heading of it, um. We could, I get where you're going with this.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Let me make this, uh, where's the number one, here we go. No. Oh, how do we do it? No. Oh, yeah, that goes away. Something, dang, how do we make it, there we go. Uh, continue, that's what I was looking for, okay. Demonstrate. Oh, and again, we have requirements, do we have, do we wanna change that to criteria or requirements? No, this is requirements.
Okay.
Cause this is on the application, I flipped over to the application. Um. Requirements must be met or maintained annually or met manually. Continued mastery of content. That's a continued mastery. Of content. Um, annually, at the end. So demonstrate continued mastery of content, knowledge, and skill. So demonstrate continued mastery of content, knowledge and skills appropriate for, um. For current grade, grade level and make one year academic growth annually. I think over here, maybe they should say for. Current grade level. So then you're saying. They may be technically age-wise a fourth grader, but they're working in fifth grade and they should be working towards sixth grade. Yeah. So demonstrate continued mastery of current kno- of content knowledge. Content knowledge. Now, just maybe, uh, mastery of content and skills. Annual of academic growth annually. Okay, does that sound better?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the board directs the superintendent to develop a process. The board directs the superintendent. To determine. Ways of establishing whether a student has met all the criteria above. These measures may be based on the following and or measures the superintendent or drives me nuts. Uh, deemed appropriate. Alright, so. Process for a student to document their post-secondary goals. The board drugs the superintendent to develop a process for a student to document their post-secondary goals for the process of this policy. And determine ways of establishing whether a student has met all of the criteria above. So once this. It's a very long sentence. I just didn't like the, yeah.
Separating it, yeah. So it says GPA and or achievement of minimum grade. I know we talked about elementary doesn't have grades. So minimum grade or proficiency standards? I don't.
Okay, so we have that stated.
Cause we talk about GPA.
That's why we came, where, where, there was a, okay.
So at the elementary right there?
Yep. So I would think, um, these measures.
Could be GPA, minimum grade.
Following. I wouldn't say achievement of minimum grade. It would be proficiency at.
Well, it is for the middle school and high school.
Right. GPA and then maybe say grades, what? Six through.
So it's right there for elementary, the second one there?
Or just say secondary, for secondary students, a GPA of, and for elementary students. Just gonna go over here and do this real quick.
So we're not flopping back and forth?
Right, cause that drives me nuts. Okay, so they're saying GPA and or achievement of minimum grade. Okay, so we said, um.
We said GPA, which is fine.
Based on the following, most recent report card or progress report indicating at least a B grade in subject areas. Or a minimum GPA of three point three. For elementary students, the most recent report card or progress report card indicating, indicate at least. Must indicate whatever, uh, proficient or advanced in each subject area. Okay, so that takes care of this one. Scores unspecified assessment. That would be the most recent for the state diagnostics. Indicating score supporting proficient or advanced.
So that's number six, yeah? And number four is number seven.
Four, seven, seven is four. Teachers. Teacher reports of whether the student meets all of the criteria listed above or. Huh? Okay, so the measures. So that would then be.
So then it would be all the stuff above that we listed that we need to get information on, like are they at grade level? Are they making a year's progress?
Right, the teacher, cause they have to have a recommendation by a teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Document their post-secondary goals. And determine a way. Does that, and it's just one teacher. It would actually be.
Includes teacher or teachers.
Teachers, so we can put S in parentheses there. Report of. Report that. So for number seven, we need reword a little bit, but don't we also need to add rather than more specific criteria? Wouldn't be, um. Regarding the timeliness of assignments and all of that. Do we need to be specify that again?
I don't think so, cause it's been, that's the criteria that we listed.
I think it just says specific criteria because if it had previously been in there, then we'd, um.
Do we remove it?
Yeah. It was like in parentheses.
Okay, so.
After teacher, we wanna put a parentheses S because like a middle school and high school needs more than one, right?
Be more than one.
And because it says reports.
And technically, wouldn't it even at an elementary level, it wouldn't be one specific teacher that would be tried, you know? What was that? Even at the elementary level, it's gonna be more than one teacher, but.
They're only required to have one.
Just one, yeah. Cause they're technically under just one direction.
Yeah.
Designation of self-directed learners. To be designated a self-directed learner, a request must be submitted to, um. Isn't it the building principal?
Think we said building principal?
Just be the building principal.
Building principal reviews documentation?
Yeah. The request process may be initiated by student, their parent guardian or one of the student's teachers. Request must include the following, permission of the student's parent guardian if under age of eighteen. Permission of the student's parent guardian.
Permission from or permission by.
The recommendation that designation as a self-directed learner would be appropriate and helpful to the student by at least one of the student's teachers. This may include the recommendation of a teacher who initiated the request. So in statute, it specifies only one for elementary or grade five and two for secondary. Or does it?
Does it not?
Okay.
Just says whose teacher or teachers doesn't make the student as such.
Could be one, but it doesn't have to be just one.
Especially if it's based, a single secondary teacher could begin the process, but they probably will get feedback from others.
Right, and it could just be the one specific course or class or subject area that.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know. Cause no, cause they're kind of as a full-time student.
Be a full-time student. Okay, so they'd have to really be able to do it for all.
Plan could be halftime in the building, halftime out.
Right.
But that would allow them to be considered full-time FTE, like we're not gonna lose ADA for the, for the half day that they're gone. You know, in our case, where we take attendance by the class period, that status matters. Elementary, the half day full is important for them.
Right. A description of the exemptions from standard instruction practices and requirements sought for the student. If a student is to be absent from the classroom during the usual school day, this must include a statement of who will be responsible for this pursuit. Okay, so what did we end up doing? Well, we did something.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Because if, I remember we were talking about.
At their rooftop?
Okay, provide outline.
Number one.
So a student will be absent from the usual school day. Okay.
So that's our, like I do remember we had a really intensive conversation about that.
Yeah, we did. If a student is to be absent from the classroom. An explanation of how this flexibility will aid the student in meeting their goals as well as. Mastering grade level content. Uh, for students in eighth grade and above, this must include an explanation of how flexible learning will. Further the student's progress toward identified post-secondary goals. Criteria the student will be required to meet to maintain their designation as a self-directed learner. Criteria the student will be required to meet to maintain their designation as a self-directed learner, such as doesn't fit there. Should be and, to meet and maintain. Okay, criteria the student will be required to meet and maintain. It's a lot of requirements. Uh, criteria to stay along with the mother to meet and maintain, to retain.
Go, come on, go back to the top of what this category is above number one.
Yeah, it's designation of self-directed learners to be, do we even read this?
Okay.
Okay.
Cause that matches what we did before.
I don't like, that just seems silly. Alright, so a request must be submitted to the building principal to be designated, to be designated as, to be designated.
Get a comma handle or at least do.
Just designated. The request process may be initiated. Okay, the request, so the, this is part of the request.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Right. Okay, so, um, which one were we on?
Number five?
Yeah. Okay. Criteria the student will be required to meet and maintain. Um, so, so to maintain the retention of, so that you don't have retain and. Maintain and change the, change the. So.
So this is just saying. If you've met all these criteria in order to maintain that status, this is what you have to do. So one, two, three and four are the criteria to get there. Five is what you have to do to keep it. With my understanding.
So criteria the students, the student will be required to meet and maintain. For their designation as a self-directed learner. So criteria the student will be required to meet and maintain for their designation as a self-directed learner includes. Continued mastery of content, knowledge and skills, academic growth, progress towards post-secondary goals. Uh, if the student is in eight, in grade eight or higher, or other measures of student learning as specified further in the request. Compliance with the district's rules regarding student conduct, except for any from which the student is specifically exempted. And so, would there be any? Um, and submission of regular updates outlining the flexibilities for upcoming instruction and how it will aid the student in meeting their goals. Okay, and so. I don't know that we had any other, did we? Any progress?
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't add any extras over here. Okay, so. Students who are in grade eight or higher must also include a description written by the student of their self-determined personal life goals. Including an explanation of how attending specific classes will lead to the fulfillment of personal life goals in addition to identified post-secondary goals. An updated request, right? Okay, so what did, cause we talked about that.
Mm-hmm. If we keep going below, I think.
No, cause then we drop right into the signatures.
I think we took it out.
Did we take it out? Cause I don't.
Cause there's nothing in the statute.
About life goals. Academic goals. Academic goals.
Ability to establish goals in general, but it isn't.
Which, that's part of. Oh, wait, no, it says identifying and writing down his or her own personal life goals. That includes an explanation of how attending specific classes will lead to the fulfillment of these personal life goals. Now.
So it does have in statute that's the exact same thing, identifying and writing down self-determined personal life goals, including. Yeah, it's exactly on statute.
Okay, so it's in statute, but we didn't down here. So this is to maintain it, continue, make progress towards, demonstrate progress, provide updates outlining the flexibility and how, um, it will aid the student in meeting their goals. So.
Could you add, right there, meeting their uh, post-secondary and personal goals?
But I don't think we need to do that. Does it say you have to update your life goals?
In order to maintain or remain a self-directed learner, they must meet criteria agreed upon by him, teacher or teachers' parents. Criteria may include continued mastery, progress towards post-secondary, and other measures of student learning. So it's a may, and it doesn't even specify.
Right, so I think that's why we just said updating our goals.
Yep.
Okay, so, over here. So we have include submission of regular updates. So it, over here, we determine that to be every semester. Semester updates.
I think regular is okay, because we specified in the application, they know what that means. It's gonna have.
Right, this is the procedure, regular updates.
To be.
I would just say semester update.
Submit semester.
Submission of.
Semester. I know, I'm like, I don't like that word.
But if you say submission of semester updates. And just.
For each semester.
For each submission of, yeah.
For regular updates each semester.
Okay, so this. Alright, so. Cause that little blurb is specific to personal life goals, which we're not harping on. An updated request for designation as a self-directed learner must be submitted for each year. Okay, so.
It's interesting, cause it does specify in statute. You know, the who in starting in eighth grade, demonstrate the post-secondary educational goals by, and then there's one, two, three criteria. The third criteria is personal life goals.
Which we have on the application, we have, um.
Yeah.
Right here. Do we need please describe there?
Yeah, cause we need some sort of a narrative of, like, we're telling them to make progress.
Right, but, but to say please describes.
Cause they can't write some sort of a.
With a description of how the student. Cause is this.
This is what they have to do when they apply in order to be considered.
Up here. I'm like, I know, we talked about it, where is it? So here's the three bullet points that I think are in statute. The learning plan, personal life goals, and then, um, you know, the extended learning opportunities, et cetera. Okay, so then.
We're getting that.
Over here. Where am I?
At the bottom, number five.
Thank you, so I don't know where I'm at. Okay. Criteria the student are required to meet and maintain for their designation as a self-directed learner. Mastery, compliance, here we are, there's my line of. Good lord. Do we need that? Because the regular updates, I think, um, outlining the flexibility sought for upcoming instruction and how it will aid the student in meeting their goals.
But doesn't this tie to, you just looked at where they have to write that description for their personal life goals?
Yeah, but the statute doesn't pound personal life goals.
It does in the initial criteria, it doesn't in the, which is interesting when it talks about the, um, maintaining.
Which, what's the policy number?
The statute?
Yeah, or, yeah.
Thirty-three, five, twelve D. So when you look right there, where am I looking? That I, I, I. Does talk specifically about personal life goals, and that's all, these are all the criteria of how to become a self-directed learner. But then when you get down below that, it has wording in, this is the remaining, and nothing talks about personal life goals and remaining. So in other words, they have to have some personal life goals in order to become.
Right.
We're not necessarily gonna check on those, the progress to those as they reapply.
Are you getting, are you actually getting towards those?
So it's part of the initial application process, but it isn't necessarily a requirement to maintain it. Is what I'm seeing.
Okay, so. So I think, over here, this whole paragraph can go out. Because we're telling them that they have to update their goals. I mean, they have to, within their update at the semester, they have to outline the flexibility they want and how that is going to aid in meeting their goals, which the personal life goals is part of their, those secondary goals. So it should all be identified. Do we need to spell it out, though? I don't think, me personally, I don't think we need to, but I don't know that, I mean.
Cause there is information about personal life goals up above, correct?
Yeah, it's up here. It's somewhere.
Since I was like, I don't know.
Identifying and writing down their own personal life goals. That includes an explanation, so demonstrated reform choice, a post-secondary career and educational goals for a student starting in grade eight by completing and updating, identifying.
So this list right here is the criteria, is that right? And then the next list is?
Well, this is the criteria. The next list is, um.
The designation of.
Right.
So, okay.
And the reason why, I mean, cause this is. So they have to, I, I mean. So we could, uh, state, could you do that so I can move my highlighter? We could state instead of, um, and how it will aid the student in meeting, instead of their goals, say, um, their post-secondary.
And personal life goals.
Post-secondary career and educational goals. So that.
So that ties it in, right?
Yeah, cause it ties it into the plan and all.
And that's what I was like, I think it's in the top part, it's just not in the bottom, and somehow we might need it in both places, so that there's.
Any question?
But it just is, we're asking for the same thing.
Except it's only in starting in grade eight.
And that's the same thing on there.
It says specifically grade eight there, at the bottom.
Where you will handle the strike yours up? See, it says students who are grade.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I was like, I think this is.
No, 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 except the post-secondary goals and the personal life plan are for grade eight. This is just saying, please highlight your personal goals and how that's gonna change.
Oh, that part right there?
Right.
So that, it might be easier just to leave that as it is, because it's applicable to the eighth-grade students only. But they're gonna have to do that criteria, if you're an eighth grader above. That might be why that's separate.
No, okay, but I guess my point is, and how, uh, the, the, I don't think the goals, though. The goals only come in at grade eight. So if you're fifth, sixth, or seventh, you don't have to include post-secondary goals and life goals.
Right.
So. Then.
Well, it does say ability to establish goals in the generic, every change appropriate outcome. It says as a generic. Prior to the fifth grade one. What says timeliness of assignments, motivation, and ability to establish goals. Right there. Number three.
Okay.
That's the only, but there is reference to goals prior to.
But it's to establishing goals, but that doesn't talk about, like, mapping them out for your life, like they do for post-secondary. So what I think we should do. Okay, but that would be too easy. I don't know, okay. Why is that now? It's gonna run over here. So, I hate that. Life goals and how, um. Do we wanna say for the, for upcoming instruction or upcoming, um, uh, I guess that's fine. That's a mouthful. Starting in grade eight, submission of regular updates at the beginning of each semester regarding post-secondary career, educational, and life goals. And how we. Well, what if we just have them, um, updates? Let's stop it at semester and say, um. Yeah.
Great difference.
Cool updates? Starting in grade five, submission of regular updates at the beginning of each semester. These updates will cover post-secondary career, career, educational life goals. And demonstrate how retaining the self-directed learner status will aid in achieving these goals. That way, it's not one long sentence. It's, it's too much of a mouthful.
Progress towards.
Starting in grade eight, semester updates must include uh, progress toward post-secondary career, educational, and life goals, life goals.
Must include.
What's that?
Just thinking, I feel like there needs to be a word between, like, a descriptor. Must include information, must include update, but it does say semester updates, so you're good. Just was. Break before I say semester leaves. Cause I want less words and it's not.
Semester, no, 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 do not use semester. How about if we say semester updates must include the student's progress toward post-secondary career, educational, and life goals?
Just felt like it was missing something.
I hear you, I hear you. Um, because, yeah, less is more, except sometimes we need more.
Yeah, simply, something simple.
Take out a key word that changes everything, right.
Do we want the optional statement in there, the rest of that could go?
Oh, this whole paragraph can go, as far as I'm concerned.
I just, that optional statement, I'm like, hmm. I just, that optional statement, I'm like, hmm, is something we talked about?
Well, the. They do need to submit a new application every year, don't they?
Right, so it's like, is it helpful to just include that statement there, so they know this is an annual thing?
Oh, right, it bears repeating, so. So if they, yeah, missed it in one section, it is repeated in the next.
Only one piece or criteria is required, like the whole application, so like you can delete all of the.
Just say it's not optional, it's.
Yeah.
It's E. Actually, it would be, oopsies, look at me, I'm poking all sorts of buttons. I'm good at that, poking buttons. Okay. Good lord. Okay. Thank you. Um, another data request.
Each semester? How are we doing semester?
Well, the updates, the update to. The updates happen semestrally, but in order to, you have to reapply each year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's how it was supposed to be.
So this is the procedure. Oh, no, wait, cancel, sorry, wrong. No, I don't wanna E. Undo, undo. It's, I don't think it's gonna let me go to, back to.
Number six?
Yeah, yeah, they are, so I don't know why it won't.
I think it would, you just.
Continue over.
So when you clicked, yeah?
No, I don't wanna box, I'm just, oh, lord, this is killing me here. The list I. Alright, this is just here, I know another way. Be smarter than the. How do you, where's the? Oh, they don't, I know they haven't, don't they have it? I know word, you can, your indentation can take you. Here we go. Decrease, incurred, no. No. Can you put in, just put a six in there? Let you go. Is that our time? Yes. So then, I'm going to make this. Restart, and, six.
F. F. F is the sixth letter of the alphabet.
Ever.
I just said it.
People.
She's just gonna type another six out of the left.
Just try.
Try, just try to type the six in there and see what happens.
Alright.
There's extra space in there because I have a.
If we had word, we'd be, I'd be zipping through this, I told you. Okay. An updated request for designation as a self-directed learner must be submitted. An updated request or application?
Oh, it's application.
For designations must be submitted. So, this is under the.
Definition of.
A request must be submitted.
Do we wanna say an application must be submitted on that one too?
Well, the request.
Okay.
Is the recommendation, a description of the exemption. An explanation of how this. Well, it would be an application, okay. Great, so, an application must be submitted to the building principal. Uh, to be designated is, uh.
To be considered?
To be. To be considered as a.
Self-directed learner.
As a self-directed learner.
Cause just applying doesn't mean you're designated.
Right. To be considered as a self-directed learner. The. Application process must be initiated by a student, their parent, guardian, or one of the student's teachers. And this is specifically saying application, okay. Just making sure. And then over here. Okay. Okay, we don't say request or application in here whatsoever. Yeah. In order to remain accepted, the student must meet the established criteria.
Which we do refer to as criteria, so.
Right. Procedure, criteria may include. We're not saying, where do we tell them they need to apply? Alright, so. Offer students the opportunity to be designated as a person.
The process for designating a student as self-directed is that this designation is provided in procedure. So then, when the procedure talks about the application. There's the answer to your question, might not be which one.
Yes, it refers to procedure, but, but shouldn't. Yeah, I still think there's a. It's necessary to refer to the application.
Did we change it to A?
I think we changed it to A.
Okay, yeah. Cause on the. Yeah, agenda piece it was F, because we didn't.
Right, right.
I knew we had the discussion.
Yep, so it is now.
A for application.
Oh, oh.
Application as.
Right, form, okay, gotcha.
Trying to have it make sense.
Yeah, we're not calling it a form, we're calling it an application, so we're changing it to A. Okay. And the application is provided, okay, so the process. Maintaining this designation is provided in this policy, and the application is provided in this policy. Okay, so we're there. Then over here, this is the application, so then in the procedure. They say application here, or no, we just changed that.
We just changed it because we don't want it to be a request.
Right.
We want it to be.
So, so here they have criteria to meet. Help the process for student, okay. Okay, designation, the application, the application, the application. Must include this. Criteria, the student will be required to meet and maintain for their designation as a self-directed learner, learner incurred, includes this. An updated application for designation. Um, so. I would, it's not updated though, cause we're not updating the application, they would just be reapplying, wouldn't they?
Well.
I mean, it could be just. Submitting the application that they previously submitted with updated signatures.
Well, and with updated data. But shows, oh, yep, now they're at the sixth grade level, and now they have, yeah, or they were a fourth grader. And now they're a fifth grader, yes, they've mastered all of their math facts.
So, application. An application for designations must be submitted. Annually. For each school year in which. The student is to have.
This designation.
In which the student. Desires. To have this designation, because for.
It could be a one-year thing based on a medical.
Right.
Or a family situation, yeah. We're gonna study abroad for a year, cause we're taking this super cool trip, and we'll be gone for an entire semester, but then I'm down, I'm back in person, yeah.
Okay, okay, so. We don't ever, we don't specify how many days prior to.
No, but we did talk about this. Last week and knew that it's not appropriate for the procedures or the, but it does need to be there, like.
Right. Yeah, so how many days as a building administrator would you want?
Think, if you're gonna look through all that, like.
Thirty days?
Thirty days, I would say, that bears minimal.
And does it have least?
Yeah, at least, yeah. Prior to the beginning of the.
School year. Or semester, I guess it could be semester, because if they're gonna only designate for second semester, because.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's when their trip is, or the medical issue happened, or whatever, I think it could be per semester.
Or, um. At the elementary level, would we need them? A trimester, or should it just be the whole year? I don't know. Trimester. Semester. Or, um, upcoming school year, that's worse.
I do think that that's appropriate, cause I think about some sort of an emergency that comes up, that you're like, all of a sudden, there was an accident, and they are, you know. Hospitalized, and we're gonna come up with this plan.
Well, in, in that case, you wouldn't have the thirty days.
That's what they were saying, the deadline may be waived. And I do think that that, yeah, isn't important. Caveat. Yeah.
Okay, the application will be reviewed. By the. And any of their staff.
Okay.
They do appropriate.
Cause your school counselors could weigh in, it depends on, yeah.
Or, or the student's educational team, I mean, would that be a better way of?
I just think if it says and, and either it gives you that. Could be one other person, it could be all team.
Right, so, if they have to apply thirty days before. How long will it take to make the decision? A decision will be made within how many days of receipt of the application? Twenty? Cause that still gives a ten-day leeway for preparation in, that's, you know.
Right, that's what I was thinking, fifteen to twenty, a lot two-week, like, okay, so fourteen days, but, hmm, let's split the difference in, you know, so twenty, that'll give you a little bit of extra. That still gives ten.
And then I need to say calendar up here as well. Okay. So within twenty calendar days, still gives ten days, which would actually be a week and. Three days. Okay, is that sufficient for parent? What do you think is parent? Okay. Uh, cause you have a little person. Calendar is prior to.
And the only reason I think you would need those full twenty days is if you're getting multiple applications at the same time.
Right.
Like, if it comes in a few at a time, they're probably gonna get back to you within a week.
It's easier.
But if ten of them gets to be in the same week.
The hands, if you get hundreds of applications.
Who's got nine hundred students?
We get hundreds, woo-hoo for us. Within twenty calendar days of receipt of the application, the student will be notified in writing of the status of the application.
Which is fine, it could be an email.
Oh, like, so the status that it's been received.
And congratulations, you have been approved.
Okay.
Um, we have reviewed your status and. It has been declined, right, yeah, whatever, we will meet to discuss other options, whatever.
Okay, so if additional information is needed, the information must be submitted within one week of receipt of the request. Is that sufficient enough time? Okay.
Since, all the other times you stated thirty, the number, the number first and then the word, do you wanna do that there as well? Or, technically, you're supposed to. Just do above ten?
Okay. That's why I did it that way, but I could do it the other, no, 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 I was making sure that there, it seemed to look better. It looks weird, I know, and I have no problem doing it the other way, because it would be consistent, so, yeah, we'll do that. One, we're telling.
We're going to let you know. Single, that's it.
Of receipt of the request. Okay. A student whose request has been denied may request a meeting with the building principal, they will provide the student with the rationale as to why. Proposal was denied, the student may submit an alternate proposal, if there is enough time to do so within the deadline described above. Do we wanna include that? It.
Okay. See why not?
Okay.
I mean, it's a little bit cumbersome, but at the same time, if. Yeah. You puts it in writing, like, the only reason you didn't is this, if you change this, we'll be fine, or.
But it wouldn't be with the superintendent, would it?
No, just the building principal, yeah. I do think this next one, we did talk about, like, if. If it's denied again, or, yeah, but.
Does it end there, or does it go on? One more step.
So, um. So we think this is applicable, correct? If the. Building principal. Rejects. They resubmit a proposal of an application.
So then, a student may resubmit an alternate application, last sentence?
Oh, you have a proposal up there above too. Why any proposal was denied? The right, right above, reapply? Uh, there too. There it is, the meeting was. That's a brush on where the. The application, thank you. Shall be provided by the building principal, the student may reapply, if there is enough time to do so within the deadline described above, if the building principal rejects, the, um. Well, it's, they did resubmit it.
Yeah, I think you're good.
It's, okay. You don't wanna say reapplication of the application. Oh, come on.
Reapplied, the reapplied application.
The student may appeal to the superintendent, all decisions made by the superintendent shall be final. Note, the appeal process described above is not recommended for districts in which the superintendent is the staff member tasked with conducting the review, or in which the superintendent holds other positions. Everybody holds other positions, right? Y'all are multitasking. Credit for flexible learning opportunities, to receive credit for activities the student participates in as part of their flexible learning activities. A middle or high school student must successfully complete an accredited online or correspondence course or a class taught by an Idaho school district or. By an Idaho school district or charter school or college credits, as followed by district policy. Or successfully challenge a course as described in policy twenty-four thirty-five. Okay, do we do this or offer this? Okay, so then we're, we need to check.
Right, and just like, I don't know, cause we offer college, like, our dual credits.
Right.
And that would be part of that, I do know that Timberlake does have, well, technically we all do, I think Timberlake just has kids that have used it more recently. But they have a process for, like, our homeschool kids that come in and challenge courses for placement. So I do know we have the ability to do those things.
Okay. Is policy, can you tell me what policy twenty-four thirty-five is titled?
We do not have one.
We do not have one.
It's advanced opportunities.
It's one that we added to the list of things that need to be created because of this new policy.
Okay, we don't have it yet. Alright, so that's.
It's on our to-do list.
I like that policy reference because it's not there. Okay, so that probably needs to be the next.
It's right there, cause it came up already in this process.
You're right, okay.
So if you wanna name it, so we know what it is, it's twenty-four thirty-five is the advanced opportunities. Right there?
There's nothing.
No, but I'm just saying.
I know, name it advanced opportunities.
No, you know, sometimes I know you put comma, advanced opportunities, or whatever you.
Right, yes.
That's what it's called, or what it will be called, it's what the.
What did he say, describe the future policy, because it doesn't exist yet.
Right, okay, yeah.
You're right. There's a spirit in here.
There is.
Making it go wild, that's amazing. Alright, ending self-directed learner status. The superintendent shall designate a staff member to supervise the self-directed learner's educational program. No.
A building principal?
Well, well, but even, it's.
Well, and we talked about this, it could be the parent, could be their hockey coach, it could be one of the teachers in the building on the team. I mean, kinda depends on what the situation is.
Except.
But it says a staff member.
But to supervise the self-directed educational program. So.
Somebody's overlooking that.
The kid has to submit updates.
To a staff member.
Right, so I would think it's that person that is responsible for making sure the kid's on task. Because if the kid's not on task academically, then we have to hold them accountable, which would be either. Revoking the self-directed learner status or whatever.
Right.
So.
But I do think, depending on the situation, like, it could be, like, in our case, it could be a counselor, depending on how their coursework is being in.
Right.
We also could be using our library lead, cause she oversees much of our IDLA.
Okay.
If their plan is primarily IDLA classes, then that's gonna fall on her. It could maybe be a teacher that has taken this kid along, that, you know, like, as an elementary teacher. Or a fifth, you know, so I think staff member, as nondescript as it is, is probably right.
Okay, so the staff member. Shall support the student in their flexible learning, monitor their academic progress, and monitor whether. They are meeting the criteria described in the requests in the application. For self-directed learner status. If a teacher.
If a staff member?
Yeah. Look at there, I made a photo. If.
The.
The staff member overseeing. Or determines. That a student is failing to meet. Criteria. Or a student is failing to complete assignments within the time provided. Then.
Time provided or the time determined? Isn't that determined, isn't?
Well, it just says in their timeliness, and it's gonna, you know, it's part of the criteria. So, one of the things that's stated in statute that's back in the application or whatever also is that. They're given a deadline to get caught up, and if they're not meeting that deadline, then.
Within, then maybe say within time deadlines, rather than provided, the time is not being provided to them necessarily.
It should be based on what's described in there, but it will be different for each student.
Right.
So, yeah, that time provided could be.
So then, the teacher may submit to the, oh, yeah, thank you.
Sorry. I'm just kinda bossy sometimes, I'm sorry.
Then the staff member may submit to the building principal. Go backwards.
Sometimes that's just faster.
To the building principal, a written recommendation to rescind the designation of self-directed learner. Status, because we called it a status. Cause, you know, I figure things out by the end of the meeting. Building principal shall determine whether to rescind the self-directed learner status. A student's parent or a student with the permission of their parent, if the student is under eighteen years of age. May submit notice to the district that they wish to terminate the student's flexible learner status. At the end of the quarter, semester, or school year.
I would say just semester, take out quarter. Of course, yeah.
And are we trimester?
Change, is it flexible learner status or self-directed learner status?
We keep calling it self-directed.
You're self-directed.
Except.
It's a flexible learning plan.
Right, yes, we're here.
One of the criteria.
Requirements for flexibility, so that's fine, but we never call it a flexible plan. Just flexibility. Okay. And that is that. Wow, we made it.
That was very good.
So, yeah, so, what I would like Maria for you to do is run the procedure by Lisa. Ask her if she can go through it and make sure she's in agreement with the language. Just cause she had such a hand in the policy. And then if she's okie dokie with it, then have it go out for.
Survey.
Thank you. Which, I don't know if the applications, the procedure go out, I know the policy does.
Normally, we do them all at the same time, like, if it's one, if the policy comes out.
Right, but ask, when you communicate with Lynn and check with her and be like, do we, cause I don't, I don't. Know why we would send the procedure out for input, because the procedure is directed by the superintendent. And I don't want people, I don't want comments that are like, why do we have two policies?
Yeah, right, or even if you sent out the policy and the application, because people might wanna see the application, because that's what they'll be completing and they have questions or clarifications on it. And the procedure and application mirror each other so much that it will feel redundant if we send both of them out.
Right, and. What I'm curious about is the policy that references the application and the procedure. So, maybe we do, I don't know. These little bottles are super cute, I need to get them for my little people. Okay, so when we come back, friends, we will go to policy twenty-four thirty-five. So I don't know if we have a.
Draft.
Draft of that, if we don't.
Don't.
Okay, if you wanna check other school sites.
My guess is most of this came from Bonchberry, because they're the ones that had this, so it might be what we have to steal from again, because I know.
Not stealing, we're just.
We're borrowing.
We are supporting what they're saying and implementing it because it's such a great opportunity.
That's right.
So pull from there, so that we're not starting from square one.
And then, do you want the service animals wanna go to?
Service animals needs to go out to survey, yes. And we can.
And do you want, once Lisa's looked at this one, you want it to go to survey also?
Yes, yes, so just let her know.
Cause I know she's hoping to get this one through before school starts.
Right, so if we can, just let Lisa know, and I know she's swamped, but just say, hey, can you quickly skim this and call her good? Okay. Yeah, alright, so it's eleven oh one, we're gonna go ahead and end, thank you all for coming.